We will start off tonight with prayer and pledge. Prayer will be led by Councilmember Balls and the pledge will be led by Councilman Ostash.
We all bow our heads, please, if you would like. I begin with the name, in the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful. All praise is due to God, the Lord of all the worlds, the most gracious, the most merciful, master of the day of judgment. You alone do we worship and you alone do we ask for your help. Guide us on the straight path, the path of those you have bestowed your bounties and not of the path of those who encourage your wrath and with those who go astray. And Lord, please look over everybody that work for the city, our administrators, our workers, and for our citizens. And Lord, please take the guns out of these young people's hands. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Seals.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Air Pro Tem Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Councilmember Braddock.
Present.
Councilmember Wiggins.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
All members present.
Thank you. Good evening again. I'd like to welcome you all to second our city council meeting. We ask that the audience refrain from booing, clapping, or any obnoxious behavior. Councilpersons, please silence your phones and your computers now. Audience, I ask that you silence your phone or your computers so that it doesn't interrupt anyone when they're speaking. Just a friendly reminder again, no booing, no clapping, or any obnoxious behavior, please. This is being televised on SGTV, so please, thank you. Madam Clerk, any announcements?
Yes, we have a few. The convenience station will be open this Saturday, May 10th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. City residents can drop off items not picked up at the curb and other miscellaneous bulky items. There is still time to sign up to help with this year's Team Up to Cleanup event. The event is also this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to noon, beginning and ending at the Public Works Building. Please visit www.saganaw-mi.com/c cleanup if you wish to sign up to volunteer. Due to city hall renovations, city council meetings will be held at the Anderson Enrichment Center at 120 Ezra Rust, beginning with the next meeting on May 21st and continuing until further notice. Due to construction on Ezra Rust, you will need to enter the Anderson parking lot from the entrance off of Fordmead Street. We have a proclamation this evening. It's declaring May 2025 as Mental Health Month.
And it will be read by Councilwoman Dickens.
Is there anyone here to accept the proclamation?
Here.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think she ran in the hallway.
Okay.
Come on, sweetie.
Welcome. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall physical health and emotional well-being, and whereas mental health will strike one in five adults and children in a given year, regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, religion, or economic status, and whereas people who have mental illnesses can recover and lead full productive lives, and whereas an estimated two-thirds of adults and young people who have mental health disorders are not receiving the health they need, and whereas the cost of untreated and mistreated mental illnesses and addictive disorders to American business, government, and families has grown $113 billion annually, and whereas community-based services that respond to individual and family needs are cost-effective and beneficial to consumers and the community, and whereas the National Mental Health Association and its national partners observe Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health and illness. Now therefore, be it resolved, I Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Month in the City of Saginaw. I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the state of Michigan to recommit to our community, to increasing awareness and the understanding of mental health, and the need to appropriate accessible services for all people who have mental illnesses. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 5th day of May in the year of our Lord 2025. Brenda F. Moore, Mayor, councilpersons Priscilla Garcia, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Carly R. Hammond, Heidi G. Wiggins, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Ostash, Eddie De-- Eric? Sorry, Eric D. Braddock Senior, and Jacinta Seals, Timothy Morales, City Manager.
All down there, shake hands, and go all the way around, and then come back and speak.
He has something to say.
You're doing excellent.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations.
And I'd like to say thank you and good evening. My name is Derek Jackson. I'm one of the many individuals in Saginaw County currently living with a mental health condition on behalf of myself. Those accompanying me tonight and others affected around the city and county of Saginaw, I accept this proclamation.
Y'all should have brought some guests with them. Can you guess, please stand? Please stand.
These are my colleagues from Bayside and my supervisor, June Lesbit.
I need to make a correction. I say Liggins all of the time because I got a Liggins in my family. It's Wiggins. Okay? I need to apologize. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, I also need to make a correction. I stated that the next council meeting is May 21st. It's May 19th. I have the date wrong.
So that means we're not, we're not totally perfect. We make mistakes.
It takes us to public input.
Thank you so much. But we are now to you, or is it back to me?
To you for the rules.
It's back to me. Public input. You will be called to the podium by the clerk. You have three minutes to speak. You will be timed by the clock. Please get everything you need to say in within those three minutes and stay focused on your major topic. The clerk will call you again, Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Sachma Jones. Onto Charles Dietz. About Ken LaCarrue.
I can't remember the last time that I was able to say something in three minutes. My prayers last longer than that. Anyway, I gave you a couple of handouts, and I'm going to read this very fast. I thought it was time that we gave you a little update about the Garber Courts and all of the urban racket sports activities. So I'm going to run through this really quick. In '24, we hosted, again, the Saginaw United High School Girls Tennis Team for practices and their matches, and they're having their last match there tonight. We partnered with the city elementary schools for Fun Fridays for after-school recreation. We hosted the Saginaw County Youth Ambassadors during their Get to Know Saginaw excursion. We hosted pickleball happy hours for several businesses as a team-building activity. And then we did our usual two months of youth tennis and pickleball camps that included one hour on the court and one hour of a STEM class. We did reach 57 kids this past, last year, and many of them came from the Boys and Girls Club. We had a couple of pickleball tournaments. There was a Hozbeck Pickles and Peppers one, and then the Hearts and Paddles Pickleball Tournament. And then we hosted a Saginaw Spirit Day for free lessons for visitors attending the night hockey games. We've had two pickleball and two tennis leagues. So, coming up this year, we're busy getting ready. We're going, we posted the Saginaw United Girls Tennis Team practices and matches again. And it's interesting for a facility unlike other high schools, visiting teams are so impressed with the Garber Courts, the girls walk around with kind of, rather proud. They just kind of think, wow, this is cool. So it's fun to see them. And we're hoping to see a boys tennis team this fall, and I know Corky Thompson's working on that. We're getting ready for our 19th year of working with youth and tennis camps and pickleball camps, and we hope to see about 70 or 80 kids this year. We've got a couple more tournaments coming up. We would like to host a collegiate tennis challenge. I'm working with several universities in the state to see if they'll come and put on a challenge. And we did start an annual fundraiser called Friends of Garber Courts, and so far we have about 60 people contributing for that. We did receive a grant to outfit the pro shop, and we're going to begin selling hats and balls to help create some revenue sustainability, because we're all volunteers and we're kind of poor. We did receive a grant to replace our entrance sign with an electronic sign, and that will be discussed in your presence this evening. We did get another grant from the state to build a new storage garage for all of our equipment. We're collecting a lot of things. So, and most of you probably know that we won in '23 the National Facility of the Year Award by the USTA. So this summer, our facility is staffed from 7:30 to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, but we're going to close for 1:00 to 4:00 each of those days just to save expenses because no one ever comes out during that period. And then we're open 7:30 to 8:00 on Saturdays and Sundays. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Debbie Malconian.
I haven't been at the podium in a while, but I'm back. This is about the property at 235 Lockwood Street in Saginaw. Five years ago, there was a fire, and it could not confirm, we couldn't, it couldn't be confirmed that it was arson. The insurance company did not pay claim for a full year and decided the home was a total loss and paid off the mortgage and remitted the required withholding of $12,000 to demolish the home if it was not rebuilt. The money is still in the city's escrow account. There's so much that I, during the past five years, the owner of the home did a quick claim deed to her son, Bobby Johnson. The entire family that did live at that address of 235 Lockwood moved over to North Carolina. Whatever letters, documents that were sent from the city to Bobby Jackson, they were ignored and basically not read. The current owner called the city days before the demolition of this demolition, and the city decided to give them 12 more weeks to repair the home. Bobby was claiming he was the new homeowner and needed time to repair the house, although he had been virtually the owner of the home and owner of the home. The homeowner applied for an electrical permit in the 13th week through an electrician who was not aware that it had been pulled, and the permit was pulled for a home that was existing, no electrical services. The code enforcement manager said, no, said so long as they have a permit pulled, we will give them as long as they want to repair the home. People worked in the home for two and a half weeks for a total of 30 hours and then stopped, and the home was set now since then, the beginning of November. In front of you, you have a picture of the house. It was taken in January. Nothing has changed, and we want to know, is a timeline being followed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Bowles.
Greetings, Council, City staff.
Good evening.
I come before you. I actually sent you an email probably a week ago, and so I'm here to follow up. It's in, it's in reference to what I call a trash problem in a city. And I come before you because I want to, of course, bring it before you and the public because I think beyond, you know, what we do, Madam Mayor, I know you do a trash, you know, pickup every year, but I think we need to do something a little bit more comprehensive. And that's not to slight anybody's, you know, efforts, but I think we need to think bigger, and I think we need to go bigger. And so I bring that idea before you in hopes of partnering with you because I'm not just complaining about it, and I'm offering my help. I'm offering a solution. I'm offering, you know, to help with a process, and I think if we can do that, I think we'll really finally tackle the problem. Because, you know, Madam Mayor brings out a lot of people every year, and she gets a lot done, and then two weeks later, it looked like she was never out there. We need to, you know, think bigger, more comprehensive, you know, plan a lot more bigger, and, you know, and even look at our ordinances, because I feel like, you know, I don't know if it's maybe $100 for littering or something like that, maybe look at the code of ordinances to stiffen that a little bit. And I'm not one of those people that wants to punish people all the time, but this particular problem, there's a lot of bad intent. You know, you see people throwing stuff out their windows, and people are dumping. We've dealt with dumping, you know, over the last, you know, number of years, and so I think, you know, if we can come up with a comprehensive plan, that would be great, and I'm willing to help with that. Also, wanted a couple of updates if you can. Two committees in particular, the Ojibwe Committee and the Homelessness Committee. I wanted an update on those. If you could give me an update on those, that's something that, you know, Saginaw Cap has kind of worked behind the scenes on, but we haven't heard anything, and so I wanted to bring that, you know, to your attention as well in hopes of, you know, getting an answer on those. And also the last thing, and this is from the last meeting, you guys did something with a contract with Birch Park with the license plate readers, and I still have some questions about that. Not real clear on it. You guys didn't get a contract for it, and so, you know, there's some things that need to be cleared up. The parameters of the contract, what are we going to do with the data that's going to be captured in that process? I think there's some more questions that need to be answered. We kind of got left holding the bag. And I, you know, just personally, you know, my last kind of comment here is, if y'all didn't see the contract, y'all shouldn't have passed that. That's just, that's just me. You don't see a contract, you don't pass it. Just a thought. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
We'll begin tonight with Councilman Ostash.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, welcome, everybody, to the chamber tonight. I'm glad that you're here. We have a full chamber again, so that's always nice to see. And for those of our watching at home, welcome as well. So the folks that came out for the accept of proclamation, thank you for coming out and bringing and accepting that. And mental health, to me also, is a very important topic for us to be talking about, not just in the month of May, but also all the time. I feel sometimes that mental health is something that if you, like, if you have a cold, you really should, if you're having a mental issue, you really should seek, you know, help from a physician that can help you. So, so thanks again for coming out and accepting that. I also want to thank one of our staff members. We just had heard about trash in the city, and if you do call in something, if you see somebody has dumped somewhere or somebody is dumping somewhere, please call our inspections department. Alan Rabidu does a really great job of getting out there and getting things picked up. I know even when I get ahold of the city manager, he's always just, you know, just get ahold of Alan, give him an address. So Alan, thank you for being on top of a lot of things, and I just wanted to personally thank you from the council table tonight. Even recently, you've taken care of some dumping that has happened in some of the neighborhoods that was reported. And then also, Garber Courts, thank you for coming out and talking tonight. I remember I was here when you raised the money for the project and got everything started. It is really a great addition to Celebration Square. It's always exciting for me to see everybody there taking advantage of the court. So thanks for everything you're doing there. The home on Lockwood, Debbie, from the Adams Boulevard Association, the president. We have spoke about this a few times at your association meeting, gatherings in the city, so I'm hoping that we can, I would like to hear something on what's going on with that as well. So it's been five years. It's time to wrap that up. Mr. Bowles, trash in the city, so thanks again for coming out. I think we talked about that a little bit. I do encourage folks to even help in your neighborhoods. I do as well. I clean about 10 square blocks of my neighborhood. I've already taken out probably about 20 bags of trash this year, and that's just in that location. So, folks, if you're listening, please keep the bags in the car till you get home. It's very easy just to throw them in the trash instead of throwing them out the window because a lot of stuff I see is fast food. Also, too, on the license plate readers, I'll make just a couple of comments. This particular contract was a contract that was ongoing from another contract that we already have with this company, and I know there was some concerns about the license plate reader. I would also like to pose the challenge that, or the idea, that if we were to put an officer there, they're going to be running license plates and they're going to be, you know, running against a hot list as well. So we did talk a little bit about the data retention. It is 30 days, and maybe we can get some more for that if you, if you'd like. So please get ahold of us. And also, I did not get the email on the trash, so please, please email that. I just checked.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Braddock.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to thank everyone who showed up today to this council meeting, also the group for mental health. Great to bring awareness to that. You know, it's growing in everyone's family and everybody in the family. Everybody has a family that deals with mental health, and so, you know, let's bring awareness to that. I'd just like to say there was a lot of good efforts going on in the city with the collaboration. It's important that we collaborate and solve these problems that we have in the community. But other than that, though, I don't have much else to say. I'm good, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Wiggins.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I also did not get that email, so would like to see that. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight to experience their city council meeting. Thank you for your commitment to our city. I wanted to especially thank those representing here for the proclamation for mental health. Thank you for being here. As has already been stated, it's important that it's not only today and not only this month, but this resonates throughout our community across our world. So it is important that we continue emphasizing the importance of getting help when it's needed and also providing those resources in a timely way and in an effective way for everyone that needs it. So thanks again for coming out, and thank you for all the speakers that came today. I don't have a lot to say, but thank you. Thank you for being here.
Next, we have Councilwoman Hammond.
Thank you. I have a couple of updates today, some things I've been working on. I attended a Michigan Association of Planners digital training last week, and they have actually a really great training series for municipalities, elected officials, whoever kind of wants to join. This one was on specifically the upcoming master plan changes. So, under Michigan state law, they recently changed, I think a couple of years ago, adding a requirement that all master plans now have to include a housing component. So there was specifics that were talked about, and Michigan Association of Planners had a phenomenal, some phenomenal recommendations, and I'd be happy to pass along to any other council members or members of the public who are interested, and I'm really excited for some of those conversations to be happening as we move into, believe it or not, our next master planning process that's not too far away. So, another very important meeting that's coming up is going to be on June 4th, and I believe that's evolved into a joint open house, so I would love to hear some more about that. But this one is being held, I think the City of Saginaw is partnering with MDOT, and it's on their M-13 and M-81 corridor study. So this is going to be June 4th at SVRC from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., which is a Wednesday. And this is really important. I live downtown. I just had to stop as a few pedestrians were going to some Cinco de Mayo events on my way here, and there was no safety measures for them to be crossing. It's a very dangerous street, and I would rather get in my car and drive, like, around the block to get across the street rather than walk, which is insane. So it's really important for members of the public to show up to that meeting if you can, and I'm hoping to try to do some survey or some kind of engagement as well up to that meeting, just so we have as many voices represented as possible, even if you can't be there. Because when MDOT, you know, those are state highways, it's MDOT's control. What they decide to go in terms of a direction based off of public comment and things like that, it's really hard to change their minds once they make it up. So in that development process, it's really important for everybody to get out there, and if you're a person who thinks that that highway and all of those semi-trucks and all of the high-level traffic and the high speeds hurts development, if you believe it hurts small businesses, if you believe it hurts walkability and hurts downtown and Old Town's capability of existing, show up to those meetings and have your voices heard. It's really, really important. I don't think I have enough time to do my last little info session, so thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for coming to your city council meeting. This is your meeting. We work, we work for you. We try our best to work for you anyway. I'd like to say thank you to all the speakers that came up this evening, and hopefully you get some answers or you'll be directed to where you need to go to get those particular answers if the city is not where you get those from. Real quick, I'd like to say there, actually, the prom in the city, this is the ninth annual prom in the city, it's the 10th of this month, which is the next Saturday. It's a special needs prom. Excuse me. It's at 3265 Kochville Road, and anyone can come. It is such an awesome event every year, and it has just grown and grown, and just to see our special needs and our adults that didn't get to go to their prom to come to that prom is so awesome. Health formation, it's in regards to Cinco de Mayo. This is their eighth annual event. It's on Mother's Day. Doors open at 3:00 p.m. Dinner starts at 4:00 p.m., and it's at the Horizon. And Orange Out, give you some more information at a later date. It's June the 7th. It's national, this is a national event, and they asked that everyone wear orange. It's National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and we're asking, or they are asking through me, that all businesses, and I'm going to be trying to contact as many businesses as I can, even at your home, if you would turn on an orange light in solidarity for this particular event. This past weekend, I went and to the fundraiser for Ms. Jessica. You all know Jessica by the tree that fell on her home, and Alex Griffin has been just awesome in doing fundraises, et cetera. So I went there and, you know, did my little, you know, every little bit, every little bit helped, so I went by there. It was awesome. Also, Cinco de Mayo, I'm telling you, I've never, I haven't seen so many people come for the parade. It was so awesome. Council was there, and I'm looking to see the City of Saginaw actually on a flatbed themselves besides your city council. Tim, maybe the city would like to start participating in those beautiful... those beautiful parades, you know. So, yeah, and I was just last week, and I, in a, on a meeting in regards to ARPA and some more things. I'll say some more in regards to that with the managers' meeting. Thank you very much, you all. Have a lovely rest of the day.
Next, we have Councilwoman Sills.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was sad that I did miss the Cinco de Mayo parade this past Saturday. I saw that it was a successful event. My school participated in it. Our kids had so much fun. They had their own little walking display. They had a huge flag, and it was, they were excited about going. A little chilly for them, but I was sad I didn't get a chance to see them either, but they were really excited about that parade. And just, it was posted everywhere, even later on in the evening, there was many cars still riding around with the flags. It was just a beautiful day in Saginaw. It was really nice to see all the culture and everything and the pride that was displayed in our city. So it was a nice day. I also attended the final 89th season of, of the Saginaw Bay Symphony Orchestra, the mayor and myself. We went to the last concert of the season, and it was a beautiful event. It was the return of the red violin. If you guys know anything about the red violin, it's a very mysterious instrument that's passed down for many centuries or hundreds of years. And it was just majestic and very surreal. I actually was, I think I almost fell asleep at one point. It was so, it was so soothing to me, because I listened to rain at night, and I felt like at one point there was almost like a rain type of sound. And I was like, whoa, this is really putting me to sleep. So it was just, they actually found a, they, they found a ticket season holder in me. So next season, season number 90, I will be a ticket season holder for the five concerts in Saginaw. So really good to be a part of that. Also, this, don't forget about the Saginaw Neighborhood Recognition Award for Best Capp yard. There are going to be four winners each month, beginning June, July, and August. And then they're going to have one grand prize winner. The nominations will begin from May 10th to August 10th. And this is from the City of Saginaw. This is so cool. And you could visit the city website for more information. Also, I didn't get a chance to talk about this last time, but they have also, the City of Saginaw Parks Department have a family play date in the park. They have five play dates in the park this summer. It's a series of play dates, and it's pretty cool. It begins June 6th. And come out, bring your kids, bring your families, discover some new skills, enjoy some fun games. Discover the city parks and get out there. There's stuff to do in Saginaw. People say it's not a lot to do. I'm experiencing having a ball, just getting out here and having a, having a great time. Again, go to the city website, register to participate. It's a lot of things to do in Saginaw. You guys, have fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Bowles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to welcome the citizens to the city council meeting and thank you all for what y'all do for the city, the mental health people. And I'm praying for you guys to keep doing what you're doing. I had an opportunity to participate in the parade this weekend too, me and my lovely wife. And she rode the float with me. We had a great time. She went and bought $60, $70 worth of candy. And I was, every time we threw something out there, I was saying, man, all these little kids, four or five years old, we just gonna rot their teeth out. So I had about 21s in my pocket, so I started passing them out. I think I was the biggest hit in the parade. Until I seen my, my great granddaughter, and she said, Papa, I want everything you got in your hand. So I gave her the $2, and teed her sister off, because then she called me. So I don't know, man. We had a good day. You know, the neighborhood cleanup situation, I personally bribed the kids in my neighborhood to clean up our neighborhood. I engage them, see them out playing in the street, and they all were eating candy, whatever, and they throw their bottles in the street and say, hey, man, you guys got to pick that up. So I started having to pick up, walk the whole block. I called the sack, it's about four or five blocks. And I told them if they keep the neighborhood clean, I will give them a little picnic, a little party. And they, and they upheld me to that. So me and my wife got a bouncy house for them, cooked them hot dogs. One little guy said he wanted chicken, so that mean he was on the grill. So, and we bought some little snacks and toys for them and all that kind of stuff. It was a hit. We had a real good time. And, you know, that's a beautiful thing to get the kids engaged in the neighborhood. You know, once they start doing this, then they find out they can do more and keep the neighborhood looking nice. But if one little kid in, in the group, I think he's going to be a con artist, because I think he throwing it out there in the street on purpose so he can get a party next weekend. That's one guy I got to work with. But, you know, you know, we don't engage these kids, who can we expect to do it? I mean, you see them in the neighborhood, just talk to them and tell them about things, about doing things right. You know, eventually they get it. I'd like to report too that my little brother in the Big Brothers program is graduating. When I first met him, he was about, maybe up to my shoulder. Now I'm, I'm up to his shoulder now. He's six foot seven, weighs 300 something pounds, wears a size 17 shoe. And I made a mistake and told him I would buy his shoes for his graduation. And I'm still fretting that. So, you know, I thank God that he, you know, graduated from school. He's a twin, and his sister is a honor student and working and stuff like that. And he's just the opposite. He's not an honor student. He's not working, but he did pass. So, you know, we're looking forward to seeing him being a productive member in society too. He wants to be a cook, six foot seven, 300 pounds cook. So y'all, y'all may see him in a restaurant somewhere, eating, not cooking one day. So thank everybody for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Protem Garcia.
Good evening concerned citizens of the community. I want to thank my friends from Bayside coming. I'm actually on their advocacy group that we meet every month, so I get to go see all of them. And I always say that Bayside's one of the best hidden secrets in the City of Saginaw, because when I would drive by there, I thought it was like a bar, and find out that's not what it was. So I've been going there for many years, and I'm part of their board there. They have great things. And one thing that they do have, people don't know, and they're always looking for donations too, they have a boutique shop there where they sell items. They help with employment, so some of that money goes back to the funding of helping them. So if you ever get a chance and you want to know what they do, just stop by, because Jim's been there. He's come with the building, I think. And he does great working there with them. And I do have family members that attend there as well, and I know that they enjoy being there. The Jim and his staff make it very pleasant to be there. So thank you guys for the work that you do, and I appreciate it. And I'm a big supporter, and you know that. Also, all the people that come out to speak, the speakers, we didn't have many, but we did have a full house. And yes to Mr. Ken for the Garber Courts. Now that the Court Street Bridge is closed, I drive by there daily, and I can't see all the people that are out there enjoying the fun. So I'm like, I have to go down there and have fun one day with them kids, because there's so many people out there. And it's already like almost 9 o'clock. I'm like, what are they still doing out here? Well, they're having fun, doing something positive, and they're being active. So I support that. Also, Mr. Bowles, I always hear about you. I know you're a community activist. I don't know a lot about you, but you're right, we do need to collaborate. Just like me being a mom, we have kids. We clean up our living room. Five minutes later, it's a trash. So collaboration is good if we can work together, you know, because of course, there's only nine of us, and then however many participate, that we have that type of, maybe monthly, we could have something, clean up the city or an award, like the East Side. Who cleans it up more, North Side, something, just to have incentives. I know I'm very competitive. So if you put like a money prize or gift card or something, I'm down, you know. So that's good. Also, Happy Cinco de Mayo. I just came from downtown the SVRC building. Miguel Torres put it on this evening, and I'm thankful that the weather turned out good. I got to give a speech and let people know that there are positive things in Saginaw to do. It's fun. It was free admission, a lot of vendors. So I went out there to show my support like always. And then also my colleagues for being with us on the parade. We lasted all the way to the very end with candy. And thanks to the East Side Soup Kitchen, they did donate five bags for us for the parade. So I appreciate Diane Keenan for that. And it was just a good time. I took my grandson, and he didn't want to leave. And when we got in the car, he fell asleep. So I knew he was tired. But thank you guys for coming out, and we appreciate the good feedback or the bad feedback, because that's what helps us as a council, know what we're doing, right or wrong in the city. So I think you appreciate it. Good night.
Everything's already said by the time it gets to me. It really is. And that is, that is not. Let me just say this. My last two weeks have been very, very exciting. Volunteers at the soup kitchen. We did a dinner for them. I did not make it to Cinco de Mayo, as you can tell. I am so congested, it is crazy right now. But I did meet with a group of, a group of young ladies that really impressed me over, 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 over these last two weeks, who are trying to do some things, just as Mr. Bowles said, to improve their neighborhood. Jeffrey, I'm gonna hold you to it. I don't know, I'm not gonna volunteer to do it, no, every month. I'm just not. I'm gonna be perfectly honest. But I do, I do believe, that's how this got started, because I rode around the city on the north, the east, the south, the west. When it started some five years ago, I didn't anticipate it going as long as it has been, but it has been. And that's a good thing. Saginaw has a lot on the uptick. And for my naysayers, just watch the dust, because what they say, turn on the channel, because you in for a long ride. And the ride is going to be a peaceful ride. To my mental health, young people, you did good, young man. You did really good. I'm so proud of you. I like that shirt too, but I am so proud of you. It takes a lot to get up to talk in front of an audience. And it doesn't matter which walk of life you come from. One of the things that I'm learning, and I have learned, and I say it everywhere I go, I am a servant. I came to serve, not be served. And when you in politics, you gotta have thick skin, because you always got somebody knocking you down. So Saginaw, put on your hard helmets, because we getting ready to go for a crash. And the crash we going for, it's gonna be a crash for the better. My public speakers, thank you so, so much for getting up and speaking. I haven't made it to the pickleball court. Gotta catch some wind. Soon as I catch my wind, I plan to go out there and run and chase a ball. But all in all, council persons, thank you so much for holding down the fort. It feels so good to have some people holding down the fort, and you don't do it all by yourself. So I thank you all so much. Madam Clerk.
Yeah, that takes us to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I did want to, since Councilwoman Hammond brought it up, there is a M-13 and M-81 corridor study. I don't have the date for the meeting, but I assume that she had the correct date. But you can also go to MDOT's website. There's a survey. You can start the survey. Then if you can't make it to the meeting, you can always get that in. The corridor study for M-13 and M-81 in Saginaw and Buena Vista Township will analyze existing multimodal traffic and safety conditions, as well as explore alternative roadway designs. MDOT is going to partner with local agencies and municipalities to use the study to build a unified approach for future of the corridor. So it's a long address, but if you go to MDOT and just search for the studies, it's on there. You can do the survey, and you can sign up to stay updated on the study. So you'll get emails on what the next steps are and when the meetings are. So check that out. And I agree, it's something that does need to be changed. And we've tried for years to work with MDOT to make Washington more pedestrian friendly. So they seem to be willing to do that now. So the more input, the better. The Saginaw Police Department will have its 2025 awards and memorial service tomorrow, Tuesday, May 6th, at 11:00 a.m. in the front lobby. We hope you can attend this event, honor our dedicated officers, and remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice for the City of Saginaw. As the clerk mentioned, the City of Saginaw would like to inform citizens of upcoming location changes for all city council meetings. Due to the ongoing renovations, our meetings will be held at the Anderson Enrichments Center beginning next two weeks from today, 120 Ezra Rust. Council meetings will still begin at 6:30 p.m. Doors will open at 6:00 p.m., and meetings can still be viewed live on the city's YouTube channel. Citizens attending the council meeting should note that Ezra Drive is currently closed, so you'll have to enter the Anderson Enrichment Center from Fordney Street near Garber Courts. The setup for the room that we did go in and set it up, it's going to have about the same capacity as this room, and we will have an overflow available too, where we can have TVs in case there are more people than room in the meeting area. And beginning in June, all of our other boards and commission meetings, with the exception of the Citizens Police Advisory Commission, will be held at Morley Building, Wantoscola, second floor classroom. The Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meetings will be recorded and made available to view on the city's website and the city's YouTube channel. Beginning June 10th, all Citizens Police and Advisory Commission meetings will be at the Saginaw Police Department, 612 Federal Avenue, in the first floor lobby. And if anyone didn't see this announcement, I think it's, it's not in the city, but it's very beneficial to us. As you know, we've been working with Corning to supply water for that project for some time. Corning is expanding their advanced manufacturing capacity to meet increased demand for U.S.-made solar products. So they are increasing their investment in that facility to 1.5 billion and adding 400 additional jobs. So it'll bring their total to 1,500 jobs. That's great. So we need our residents to go out and apply. They were part of our job fair that we had at the Anderson Center a month or so ago. So check that out. I know they're, they're still taking applications. And finally, we do have a presentation this evening. And it is for the city budget as required by city charter. The budget was delivered to council last Monday. Council members should have received a copy of the proposed FY2026 budget, as well as the budget schedule. The recorded budget presentations are also available. Office of Management Budget also has several time slots available for meetings for council members who would like to meet and discuss the budget, or if you have any questions about it. So before she starts, I'd like to thank all of the departments for putting together their budgets, and the Office of Management Budget for completing the budget on time and getting it submitted and balanced. So with that, I will turn it over to Elonda Bland, who's our Director of Office of Management Budget. If anyone would like to leave.
No, I, I am, I am sorry. I know I'm, I know I can say that, but I, I just see the people moving, and so you didn't empty the room. I think everybody would like to hear this, because we talking about the budget. I mean, if you never wanted to hear anything, you need to know what the money is, and what we gonna do with it.
Don't matter. They spinning it.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I would say good evening to the mayor, mayor pro tem, city council, and the city manager. Tonight, I would like to give you a quick overview of the fiscal year 26 budget. Like the city manager said, you received your budget on April 28th, and then you received recently the long presentation of the budget. With me tonight is Thomas Rains. He's our Deputy Director of OMB, as well as John, Jonathan Baker, the Budget Analyst for the Department.
Can y'all stand up? Because y'all just waving hands. Nobody know y'all. Thank you.
Ah ha, I figured it out. Okay. So copies of the proposed budget is available in the clerk's office up here on the second floor of City Hall. It's on the city's website. Tonight, we're doing our first session of review. We're planning on having a public hearing, as well as adoption, on Monday, May 19th. If anyone has any questions, or a citizen wants to get in contact with their questions, they can reach me at 989-759-1784, or YBland@Saginaw-MI.com. You also should have received the infographic that we created several years ago to give you a quick overview of the budget. So go in the right direction. Okay, so this budget, the 26 budget continues to reflect our commitment to quality and services for our residents, as well as preserves our organization's long-term financial stability. The total citywide budget. The total citywide budget is projected to be a 203.77 million. This represents a 30.14 million dollar or 13% decrease from the previous fiscal year. Uh, the general fund budget for fiscal year 26 is projected to be 45.14 million. Um, and this represents an increase of 587,822 or roughly 2% from the previous fiscal year. Non-general Fund budgets account for approximately, uh, 78% of the total citywide budget. And when I say non-general fund, I'm referring to the, the four other fund types that I'll be reviewing tonight. So let's talk a little bit about the largest changes that occur in four funds that is impacting your budget. In 2025, the budget, uh, budget reflected the state of Michigan Saginaw Medical Facility Fund. The city received from the state of Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Development, a grant of 30.3 million dollars. Uh, this new fund was created in fiscal year 25 and activities have occurred through, uh, through that fund for the development of the medical facility. For fiscal year 26, we are budgeting 21.27 million as, um, we will begin to work on the project. Another fund that's, um, impacted this year is your American Rescue Plan Act Fund, which will decrease about 28.92 million. As city council has already allocated all the ARPA funds, um, people have been spending it. And so as people are spending it, your balance is going down. Um, we will continue to, uh, review the ARPA funds and we will do budget adjustments throughout the year. As people are spending more that wasn't captured in the, uh, when we were developing the budget. The Water Operation and Maintenance Fund will decrease 10.38 million. And this reduction is due to a decrease in the planned construction projects, uh, for water improvements. Uh, the Department of Water and Wastewater Services continues to budget for the elevated storage tank project and the lead and copper galvanizing line replacement project. A portion of these expenditures will be offset by federal and state grants. The last fund that will be impactful, every, all funds are impactful from a budget perspective, but, um, will have a large change. Is your Sewer Operation and Maintenance Funds, which will decrease about 11% or 4.11 million. Um, this decrease is directly related to a reduction in the number of construction projects planned for, for 2026. Fiscal year 26 also reflects changes to the salaries for all employees as council already approved the collective bargaining agreement in late fiscal year 23. These agreement, this agreement allows for a 2% across-the-board increase. Uh, the cost of healthcare benefits also increases and, um, the projected increase for active he- healthcare, which is very surprising, was about 30%. And that was partly due to, uh, prescriptions. And then, um, 12% of it was retiree healthcare, so you see a 12% increase in retiree healthcare. The city will also experience an increase in several of its internal service funds such as Technical Services IS because the cost of software, the Motor Pool Operation and Maintenance Fund, um, due to the cost of vehicles, uh, motor vehicle, uh, supplies and repair costs. And the Self Insurance Fund due to increased insurance rates, um, nationwide. And for your, um, ease of trying to understand all this information, if you, uh, are reading the budget document, I would highly suggest, uh, looking at the Budget Overview Section, which starts on page 31 through 59. Cause there we give a lot of explanation as to the variance why things are changing. So, um, also wanna give you a pictorial representation of what your, uh, historical city budgets have looked like. So in fiscal year 22, you can see that the general fund budget was 37.79 million. Citywide budget was 132.4 million. As of 2026, you'll see that the general fund budget is 45.14 million and, uh, citywide is 203.77 million. Your largest budget was in 25, where you can see that, um, overall citywide, it was 233.92 million. So wanted to talk about some challenges that the city is facing. This is also in, um, the manager's letter, so, um, we have, um, first thing I wanna talk about is your employee healthcare benefit costs. So the city continues to face significant challenges related to rising costs of maintaining a comprehensive service delivery system. One of the primary financial pressures continue from the escalating costs of providing healthcare services to employees, which has had a substantial impact on the city's overall budget. For fiscal year 26, the cost of providing employee healthcare benefits increased by nearly 30%. Um, with the city's revenues remaining relatively flat, this significant rise in expenditure has placed considerable strain on Saginaw's financial position, but we're in a healthy position. It's just surprising that a 30% increase, I've been here for 18 years, that's the largest increase I've seen in the last 18 years or so, but it was impactful. Other employee, post-employment benefits, also known as your OPEP and, and your pension liabilities. Funding for the OPEP and pension liabilities remain a significant concern for the city of Saginaw. And for fiscal year 26, budget continues to address these unfunded liabilities by allocating funds towards both retiree healthcare and pension costs. To support the long-term and affordability of pension expense, the city has re-amortized its pension assets. Fiscal year 26 marks the fourth year of realizing these re-amortized pension contributions. Fiscal year 26 reflects a 12% increase in, uh, retiree healthcare, uh, driven by current market conditions. And then the pension obligation will remain the same as in fiscal year 25 at 19 million. And something that I talked about at our strategic planning session was our population loss, is something that, um, does impact us. And Saginaw has grappled with, uh, budget challenges for many years. And one of the most pressing issue is declining population. Many of the major revenue funds, um, such as state shared revenues, property income tax, federal entitlement funds are impacted by the city's population. Revenues like state share revenue and state allocated dollars for roads are directly impacted by the number of city residents that we have. As the population continues to shrink, these revenue streams, uh, decrease accordingly. Making it increasingly difficult to maintain essential services, invest in infrastructure and to support long-term growth. This ongoing population, uh, loss fuels a cycle of disinvestment and financial strain. Further complication, complicating efforts to stabilize the city finances and attract new residents. But there is a positive side, I mean, that kind of, kinda like, it's a little gloomy, right? There's a positive side to this. Um, the way that the city of Saginaw has been able to cope with these challenges has been through the identification and, uh, securing other revenue sources, which has been grants, we've got a lot of grants. So I kinda segue into, let's talk about your resource allocation. So the breakdown of the total 203.77 million is represented in this pie chart. The general fund represents roughly 22% of the total citywide budget. Special revenue funds represents roughly 31% of the total budget. The largest part of the budget is represented in your enterprise funds, which consists of your boat launch fund, sewer and water operation and maintenance funds at 42% of the total budget. Internal service funds represents roughly 5% of your total budget and your fiduciary funds, which is your, is 0.02% of your total budget. The, um, there are specific expenditures that are impacting all of your funds. So as I go through the presentation, looking at the fund type, this is something that's overarching. These expenditures include your cross-the-board salary increase of 2%. Um, you see increases in your general liability, uh, insurance costs due to current market conditions. Increase in information management charges due to costs of, uh, computer software. Increase in the motor pool charge, uh, for services and repair. At 12% increase of, in retiree healthcare and in your, um, 30% increase in your active healthcare. The general fund, this is your largest discretionary fund. And again, this represents roughly, uh, 22% of your total citywide budget. And this budget for fiscal year 26 is projected to be 45.14 million dollars. This represents an increase of 587,822 or roughly 2% from the previous year. Now looking specifically at each of your general fund departments, cause it's broken out into various appropriation centers. In the Office of General Government, there will be an 87,473 dollar increase and outside of the i- um, items that I listed off earlier. Some of the notable changes will be realized in the Office of Human Resources as they increase their labor professional services. In addition, in the Office of Management and Budget, the 26 budget reflects the continued contract with Guide House as city council approve the use of ARPA interest to offset the expenditure. The Department of Fiscal Services will realize 107,776 increase. This increase is tied to salary benefit increases as well as contracted services. And then now I wanna talk a little bit more in depth about, uh, community public safety, community pu- public, uh, police and fire. Looking at community public safety police, we have 64 sworn and 25.6 civilian, making the total complement as 89.6 personnel. During fiscal year 25, city council approved the Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women Grant. This added an additional police officer to the personnel complement for the next three years. However, this budget does reflect a reduction in seven school crossing guards in the Patrol Division. Um, this reduction is due to the fact that these positions have been vacant for, uh, several years and are no longer required due to the closing of several schools. Additionally, a tackling operator will be added to the complement while eliminating an office assistant 2 position. So it was a vacant position, we kinda upgraded it to a tackling operator. Uh, community public safety police will increase approximately 11%. Um, and outside of the items I've already discussed, this increase is largely due to the city allocating 1.36 million dollars in state and federal grants. So they received a lot of grants in this past year that we're recognizing. Now looking at the personnel complement for pub, uh, community public safety fire. Uh, community public safety fires sworn number is 41 sworn and one civilian, making the total complement to be 42. Uh, during fiscal year 25, city council approved the addition of the Community Engagement Officer for the National Opioid Settlement Fund. 10% of this position is allocated to the general fund and the remaining 90% is allocated to the National, uh, Opioid Settlement Fund. Community Public Safety Fire will increase 106,927. And this is attributed to, um, your retiree healthcare increase as well as general liability premium insurance costs, record management software, information management charges and training and development. Moving to the next department, the next department is Neighborhood Services and Inspections. And this department will realize a 290,920 dollar increase from the previous year. For 2026, this department will realize an in, uh, increase in salary and benefits for two code enforcement officers that were allocated to, um, that will be allocated to the inspection divisions. These positions were once paid for from the Community Development Block Grant Fund. In addition, we're at allocating 10% of salary and benefit costs of two environmental enforcement officers to the Parking Operations Division, um, for the care of city-owned parking lots. These positions, these par- these environmental enforcement officers are shared with the Rubbish Collection Fund Environmental Improvement Division. The next, uh, department within the general fund is Department of Public Services. And this one will decrease 1.77 million. The largest reduction in the general fund budget, and this is due to the completion of the Department of Housing and Urban Development 2023 Community Project Fund that we received two years ago. Outside of the, those, um, outside of this, uh, discussion, we will continue, they will continue to utilize the, um, McDonald Ford Municipal Buyback Program for purchasing of, uh, vehicles. And they will replace features at the Celebration Park splash pad. The department will continue to pay debt service. The last department of the general fund is your other general fund expenditures. Um, this department will decrease 2% from the prior year and this reduction is realized in the funds operating transfers out. During fiscal year 25, the general fund through the cost allocation plan was required to repay the local street funds for funds that they capture in the previous cost allocation plan. That is done for 26. We, they, we've covered it for 25, we no longer have to pay that in 26, so that was the reduction in this department. Special Revenue Funds, now special revenue funds accounts for, uh, proceeds from specific revenue sources that are legally restricted to expenditures for specific purposes. Um, these funds account for roughly 31% of the total citywide budget. These decreases are most notably noticeably seen, seen in the, and as already said, the American Rescue Plan Act Fund will decrease, um, about 28.92 million. And, um, this reduction is due to completion of council-approved projects. But again, we will be doing budget adjustments as people continue to spend their money and, um, as they, they spend their money, we need to reali- or allocate for it, so that's gonna happen in 26. The Downtown Development Fund will decrease 731,267 to make the 26 budget to be 188,820. This reduction is attributed to the completion of the million-dollar grant from the state of Michigan Environmental Great Lakes Energy Remediation Redevelopment Division. Um, you'll see on this chart that CDBG is listed at 5.2 million. Well, there's various funds within that CDBG category. The Community Development Block Grant Fund is one of those funds and that fund will be 1.94 million for fiscal year 26. This is a reduction of 318,041 dollars. This reduction is due to a decrease in the federal entitlement funds. The Capital Project Fund for, uh, accounts for financial resources that are used for long-term, uh, investment projects requiring large sums to acquire, develop, improve and/or maintain capital assets. For fiscal year 26, the budget, uh, will be 3.49 million and this is a decrease of 411,000 dollars. This decrease will be recognized in funds, um, allocated towards debt service payments, cause in 2015, we had the capital, limited capital improvement bond that we had issued. And so those payments are going down. So that's what you're seeing, you're seeing a reduction in those debt service payments. As well as we reduce the allocation for, um, for the City Hall renovation project, so we just, uh, budgeted less, um, for that project. Another fund that will decrease in 26 is your National Opioid Settlement Fund. Um, the budget for this, uh, fund is projected to be 139,721. Um, this is a 28,567 dollar decrease. For fiscal year 26, the budget includes 90% of a Community Engagement Officer for Community Public Safety Fire as well as city council-approved contract for Community Public Police with the Saginaw County Community Mental Health to provide services. So even though you're seeing a reduction in that fund because we're just receiving less, um, you're still providing those services for both police and fire. Um, these reductions are offset in some increases in your special revenue funds. I already mentioned the, uh, state of Michigan Saginaw Medical Facility Fund, that increases. So that budget is 21.27 million. And again, they're gonna be breaking ground on the medical facility project, we're projecting that anyway. Major and local street funds will increase. The major street fund will realize a net increase of 1.39 million overall to make the 26 budget be, to be 9.99 million. Um, this increase is largely realized in the increase of projects planned citywide as presented by, uh, city engineer Travis Hare back in March. The local street fund will increase, will be, well, actually, will be 3.76 million for fiscal year 26. And this increase is largely due to the city receiving Saginaw County Road Village Funds in the amount of 1.21 million. So we're receiving their, uh, the road village of monies in fiscal year 26. The Block Grant Home Program will be 2.7 million, 2.07 million for fiscal year 26. And this represents a 487,605 dollar increase. This increase is due to receiving and utilizing the Home ARP grant. So when we get our ARP funds, we also got home ARP funds. And so they've already allocated for those projects, we're just using more of it. And then, uh, Public Safety Village Fund for 2026 will be 3.6 million dollars. And this is a 429,000 dollar increase from the previous year. And this increase is due to increase in real property tax revenues for it. Also, it should be noted that in 2026, the personnel complement remains the Also, it should be noted that in 2026, the personnel complement remains the same at twenty police officers and ten firefighters. So the next fund type is your enterprise funds, and these type, this type of fund accounts for services provided to the public on a user-charge basis. Enterprise Fund, again, represents approximately forty-two percent of the citywide budget. The Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 26 is projected to be eighty-five-point-three-six million, and this represents a decrease of fourteen-point-point-nine million, or roughly fifteen percent from the previous fiscal year. On the revenue side for the year beginning July 1, we will continue to have a rate increase for both water and sewer that you approved a couple of years ago, so that is built into the budget. Looking at the fund specifically, the Boat Launch Fund is twenty-five-thousand dollars, it has remained twenty-five thousand, and it will continue to remain twenty-five thousand. The Sewer Operation and Maintenance Fund will decrease four-point-one-one million for a total of thirty-four-point-one-seven million dollars. This decrease is due to a reduction in planned capital purchases and capital improvements as well as debt service payments. In addition to, in addition to offset the reduction in this fund, there will be increases to specific line items such as chemicals, engineering services, motor pool charges, general liability insurance, premium costs, information management charges, and indirect Further, during fiscal year 25, the city was preliminarily awarded a multi-year clean-water state revolving fund grant, so when I said that we get more grants, we did, and this grant is eighteen-point-eight-two million dollars. So that's listed in the budget. As mentioned in the sewer and water presentation from Mike Grenier, the Director of Water and Wastewater Services, these funds will be utilized for system improvements and various capital outlet projects. The department also adds two utility persons, three positions, and will eliminate one utility one position, and these positions are shared with the water fund. Now, looking at the Water Operation and Maintenance Fund, it will decrease roughly ten-point-three-eight million for a total of fifty-one-point-one-seven million dollars. This decrease is due to reduction in planned capital purchases and capital improvement projects as well as debt service payment. And similar to the sewer side, you're seeing certain line items increasing like chemicals and engineering, motor pool charges, general liability insurance. Further, during fiscal year 25, the city was preliminarily awarded a multi-year drinking water state revolving grant in the amount of eighteen-point-eight million dollars. For more information, for more details for you, we do have a presentation that was presented by Mike Grenier, the Director of Water and Wastewater Services, and Phil Carwatt, the Director of Public Services, to give you more explanation of what's going on with the water and sewer fund. Our next fund type is internal service funds, and these account for goods and services provided to one department by another on a cost reimbursement basis. This fund type represent approximately five-point-two-seven percent, or about five percent of the total citywide budget. All the funds in this fund type increased in fiscal year 26, just like, they all went up. So we're going to look at each of the different, and there's not that many funds, but we're going to look at each one of them. The Public Works Building increases roughly twenty-eight-thousand-eight-ninety-nine from six-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-seven-sixteen in '25 to six-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-six-fifteen for '26. This increase is due to personnel costs, like salaries and benefits, and general liability insurance premium. The Technical Services GIS Fund will increase seventeen-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, and this is a net increase, and this fund is primarily attributed to increase in salary and benefit costs across the board. However, there will be a reduction in training and development of staff because they're not going to be attending a conference in 26. The Technical Services IS Fund will increase sixty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars to make it two-point-one-five million, or from, take it from two-point-one-five million to two-point-two-two million. This increase is attributed to the purchase of computer software as well as the lease on the central network switch for city hall. The Radio Operation Fund will increase fifty-one-thousand-eight-sixty-six to make it one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-six-sixty-five. This increase is largely due to recognizing depreciation costs for the purchase of the new radio system back in fiscal year 24. I've already said this before, but the Motor Pool Operation Fund will be three-point-one-nine million for '26, and this is a two-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-three-dollar increase from the prior year. And again, this increase is related to the cost of motor vehicle supplies and repair costs. This fund will also be purchasing a shop truck through the municipal buyback replacement program, and additionally, during 2026, a fleet foreman has been added to the complement, and this was possible due to the elimination of a vacant fleet maintenance person three position. So one for one. The Self Insurance Fund for '26 is projected to be two-point-six-six million, and this is an increase of three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand dollars, which is due to increase in insurance rates in the nation. And finally, the Workers' Compensation Fund will be one-point-four-one million for fiscal year 26, and this is an increase of thirty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. This increase is due to higher appropriation of funds for settlements and judgments. The last fund type is your fiduciary funds, and the fiduciary funds accounts for the administration of property or assets that are owned by other entities besides the city. And this fund type is point-zero-two percent of the total citywide budget. And so for fiscal year 26, it's projected to be thirty-four point, or thirty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten dollars, and this is the same as it has been in the previous fiscal year. The Cemetery Endowment Funds accounts for this type, in this type, and these funds are legally restricted, resources that are twenty-five percent of the cemetery revenues collected in the general fund. These revenues can only be used for cemetery care purposes in accordance with the city So that's a lot of information, right? That's a lot of information. So this is where we're going for you. The Office of Management and Budget understands that the budget can be a little overwhelming, and we invite city council members to meet with us to discuss any questions that you might have, questions and concerns. As part of the information that has been provided to you by OMB, we also provide it several dates and times in which we can meet with you to discuss your questions. Should you like to meet with us, you can contact the city manager's office, and they will set up a schedule or time for us to meet. So I thank you for your time this evening, and I am available for any of your questions.
Thank you so very, very, very much for your presentation, and I had just sent Tim and Emeck that said, is there a way you could set up a time so she, so Michelle Alana can redo this whole? I have to, I have to hear everything again, so that was on point. But anyway, I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Two questions. And one, when you were talking about the ARPA funds, you said something in regards to spending more that wasn't captured. Can you explain that a little bit more in detail?
About the ARPA funds? What I was saying is that, okay, so at this point, we budget it based on what we know, and so your subrecipients are continuing to spend, so that could exceed what's in the budget. And so what will happen is that once I'm notified that they haven't spent all their award and it's not listed in the budget, I will do a budget adjustment so that they spend all of their money.
Okay. Next, thank you. Next question. Just a few minutes ago, just go back a few minutes, you said something, and it kind of excited me for a second, wondering, and I think I heard a little bit in the audience, and I just know that isn't all the way. You said something about twenty police officers and ten fire persons that you give dollars to, that, that doesn't mean that we only have twenty police officers and ten fire people.
During my presentation under the general fund, I said that we have sixty-four police officers and forty-one firefighters.
Okay.
Of which, in your Public Safety Millage Fund, because it's a special millage fund, of that sixty-four, twenty of them are paid for from the Public Safety Millage Fund, of the forty-one, ten are paid for by the Public Safety Millage Fund.
I just want you to explain that, because I think somebody's like, oh, Lord, that's all we got.
No, no.
Thank you very much, and I will definitely set up a time so I can bother you a little bit.
Sounds good.
No questions? Yes?
I guess my question, would you like a drink of water?
I'm good.
Some of those grant funds are quite, quite long and tongue-twisting, but again, thank you for a great presentation, and also, I know it's going to be available tonight after our meeting on YouTube, on our YouTube channels, the other presentation that Yolanda's talking about, and that is, really goes into depth. Some aha moments for me is that you talked about our property taxes, not so much a question, but this more of a comment for the public that is watching. Note that she said that there's been a decrease in the millage rate again this year because of our tax cap. So every time when you hear my taxes went up, yeah, your home value went up by five percent, which is a state cap as well, that's affecting all the millages that we pay, but your property taxes are remaining flat because you hit up and we hit down, and we have to adjust your millage rate. So that's really important to, to make that comment here tonight, too. The, now, you talked about the public safety millage, and Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia was just referencing that. The seven-point-five percent, seven-point-five mills that the public approved again last year, thank you, City of Saginaw for doing that, those twenty fire, twenty police, ten firefighters, over the past three years, there has been some increases due to home values because we were at seven-point-three-eight at one-time mills in that particular bucket. Of course, in the taxable values of the homes have been rising, millage rate had to come down, but even though so, but this doesn't have a cap. So over the last few years, and we may have to meet on this, because you know I'm very passionate about public safety and police, going back to '24, it was like six-hundred-thousand increase, then a nine-hundred thousand, now, these are rough numbers, and then this year about a, just under five-hundred thousand. So with those salaries and benefits and retirement and projections for pension, not pension because that's not there, but the retirement funds, of all of that money that's there, minusing out all of those costs that we have to pay, is, what are we left over right now? Because my, my, we've met on this before, is can we hire more police officers? And that's, that's the big question for me this year on that one.
I would say that that fund is supposed to break even every year.
Right.
So it's paying for basically thirty individuals, and the costs of these individual, or these positions, like every other cost, have been increasing.
Yep.
And so some of their costs are shifted to the general fund to make sure that it breaks even, and vice versa. That fund will always break even, it's supposed to always break even. So if we have three-point-six million dollars and it covers thirty personnel, then that's what it covers.
Right, okay, I'll, I'll set something up, we can talk on that one, I don't want to take up a lot of time on that tonight, so thanks, Mayor, that's, I'll let somebody else go.
Thank you, you want me to, Councilman Balls?
Thank you. During the budget talks, do the staff ever talk about, we got funds for housing, for improving housing, do we ever talk about building more housing? Like grab a couple of blocks and put some homes on them, or tiny homes, anything like that?
I can say, oh, community development black grant is where you're going to see housing repair. And then when we go through our, the Human Planning Commission allocation of funds, funds is given to partners like Habitat for Humanity to build housing, or to build houses. That's where most of your, you're going to see most of your funds. The home ARP allocation does provide for some new housing. Is there some big plan about it? Not to my knowledge, we've been more aligned with home repairs.
Okay, I was just hoping that we start building some new, and not just the Habitat-type houses, but you know, maybe some, some housing where people that are making pretty good salaries want to move to a particular neighborhood, maybe some mixed-use housing, you know, where you can have maybe two or three different income levels living in the same area. You know, I'm concerned about that, I don't know, I never hear us talking about people wanting to invest money in homes, or even us talking about building new homes for, to attract people with better wages into the city, and I think that we need to start talking about that. I'm not just talking to you right now, I'm talking to the city manager right now, too. But I think that's some of the things that we need to start seeking. You know, I'm really concerned about the tax base that here in the City of Saginaw, you know, when they passed the Hilly Law, and, and all the people that work for the city start living on outside the city, maybe we need to ask the people that work for the city, that don't live in the city, what would make them more attractive to come back to the city and bring some of those taxes back home? You know, and not only the taxes, but just their human presence to make our community feel better when they know that the guy, the city manager, which do have to live in the city, but maybe the operation manager of this and that, the water department, these guys stay in our city would make them feel better. You know, I don't, it's just a strange situation for me to see people that work for the city but don't live in the city, and how would they really feel about making things happen in the city, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I'd just like to see a more cooperation with the, trying to get people to come back home, you know, so.
Understood.
I know when Reuben Daniels stayed in our neighborhood, it was a big difference when you know the police officers stayed two houses down from you, you know what I'm saying? When you walk past that house, you tiptoe.
Right.
You know, you didn't want him to come outside catching you doing nothing bad, and now the police don't even have to live in the city, so. It's an issue for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Balls, you're, you're singing my tune. I have a couple of questions, for a couple unrelated to that point. First off, so you mentioned multiple times in your presentation, increasing costs due to some, to, to a lot of salary adjustments according to a collective bargaining agreement. You also mentioned separately from that, increases in professional services costs. So is that, is that different? Is, does that, when you say that phrase, does that usually mean contractors and outside contracting?
When I talk about professional services, yes, I'm talking about actual contract outside of, like, you're hiring some professional.
Okay.
Like Guide House would be a type of contract, or Maximus, that would be your professional contract. Our collective bargaining agreement is just, this is what your council has approved, the two percent across the board.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that distinction. And when, I believe that when we did our strategic planning session this past few months, it was the January 30th, right? Part of that discussion was to roll into the priorities and, and build priorities to be reflected in upcoming budget. Can you tell me where some of those priorities line up with the current presented budget?
Well, when I was developing the budget, I was, because it hasn't, like, your priorities haven't been released yet. So most of the budget is developed based on our prior priorities, so economic development, arts and culture, neighborhood, light and beautification, infrastructure, so infrastructure, water and sewer. Our contract with Saginaw Future and with the DDA is economic development as well as SEDC, beautification, environmental improvement, inspections, I mean, I can identify it in that way because we haven't, there's not been, this is what your objectives are, there hasn't been a formal approval of that, but what we did base it on is the prior year approvals.
I see, thank you. And then, yeah, when, when we talk about housing, I think that in the discussions that I've had, and, and thank you to Councilman Balls for bringing that up, it always takes seed money. You can't, even if you're trying to layer multiple millions of dollars from, from MISTHA, from, if you get anything additional from the state, or if you're trying to go out for federal home loan bank funds, you need that seed money, so. And also, another conclusion that I've come to after meeting several times with a lot of these organizations is that we can't do it without investment in strategies alongside of our public entities, like the Housing Commission and the Land Bank, who also deal with housing. So I would, I, I, I will bring that up, and I will be scheduling a meeting, I really appreciate this presentation, this is phenomenal, and I will be reaching out on, on those, on those options because I think it's, you need investment to build investment, but I, I really appreciate you digging it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep. First of all, Councilman Balls, you were talking about the living in the city. That's the Residency Act, PA two-on-two, maybe that can get overturned by the state someday, I don't know, just saying.
That'd be good.
Yeah, but going back, what, I noticed during the rubbish, uh, present, part of the rubbish piece of the presentation, five-point-four million now in the rubbish. And I know, when we started with the two-hundred-and-forty-dollar fee for the rubbish, we were at about four-point-eight million. So, with that increase, how are we keeping the fee at the two-forty? Because I know that comes up when, when you go to a neighborhood association meeting, that, it's a.
I'm going to ask the Director of Public Services to come and talk about that.
And I'm constantly saying, we are trying to keep, it was, it was a ten-year plan to try and keep that, so I, sorry, Phil.
Councilman, thank you, uh, I, I probably don't have an exact answer for you, but, I mean, there's some things I could go back and look, but, one thing I am trying to do is not raise fees on anybody, so. Some of you may have been on council when I gave my last in-depth rubbish presentation, um, when the fee was like, it was two-hundred bucks, but then we were going to raise it ten bucks a year for five years, right? And fortunately, I've been able to stop that increase at a four-year period about four years ago. Um, and one thing is just by trying to keep costs down. Um, we fortunately, about two years ago, because we are members of Mid-Michigan Waste Authority, they do our solid waste collection. Several years ago, we brought recycling in-house and yard waste in-house as a cost-saving measurement, because our participation rate, especially on recycling, is so mu, so low. So if you're part of the authority, you pay per unit, it don't pay per unit collected, so, in order to save costs, that was a big way of bringing that back in-house. But the other thing, through the negotiations, we really only had two vendors we could work with, one was Waste Management. Um, and if we would have went with them, they didn't offer a manual collection service, they only offered carted. So if you go, if you see some of these other communities, Saginaw Township, uh, Thomas Township, um, some, half of the membership, there's about thirty-some members of the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority, went to, went to, uh, Waste Management with carted. But we stayed with priority for manual, because that's saving us between six and seven-hundred thousand dollars a year. Plus, you don't have a limit on the number of, the amount of trash, or there's like a twenty-bag limit. If you were to the cart, you can only get whatever would fit in the cart, you'd have to buy another cart. So, by doing some, some of that thinking like that, uh, it was, we've been able to keep our costs down.
Thanks.
Um, and then trying to make our equipment last, last much longer, and then through some finance packages, by buying some equipment, by financing it versus cash purchasing, it's been able to help us, uh, c, control those funds a little bit, but.
Thank you.
I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but this might be the last year of not going that extra ten dollars, so, um, you'll probably be hearing more from me, because we'll probably be taking it to the two-fifty next year.
Well, and, um, like Yolanda said, population. We've got to get our population, because the more people that live here, the more people that share these costs, so, yeah, thank you, thanks, Phil.
Any other questions?
I got one.
Sure.
I see it every year. Tim, are we ever going to be able to spend that money at the cemetery? That money just sitting there, I know every year you tell me we playing with the interest. That bothers me, because we got a lot of work that needs to be done. I know ARPA took some of the pain off of us, because now, when I go visit, my mom, it's not a, a, a dive. It's, the drainage system is much better. But, I mean, do we need to, we still can't do nothing about that?
So, no, you can't. So, the city, I don't know how many years ago.
In twenty-five.
Probably. In the.
Over twenties, yeah.
Probably in the fifties or sometime. Established a cemetery endowment fund, so when you establish a cemetery endowment fund under the state law, you continue to put funds in there, but you can only withdraw the interest. So you can't touch the principal of those funds. It's for the perpetual care, because, you know, cemeteries are, actually, our cemeteries used to be a, um, enterprise fund.
An idiot.
But they cannot sustain themselves, because, I mean, morbidly UK one time. So, perpetual care.
Right.
Is not provided for in that, so, um, it's always going to have a, probably a general fund component. Um, and that fund, you know, the idea is you're generating an annual income, which, um, I changed that fund, uh, several years ago. So we do generate, I mean, it depends on the market and the interest rates, but maybe between forty, sixty, seventy thousand, we used to make about fifteen-hundred bucks a year. So we do have, uh, some cash flow there to bring back into the cemeteries. I mean, you're not going to, you're not going to do a two-million-dollar project with that, which, uh, fortunately, as the mayor mentioned with ARPA, we've, uh, rehabbed the building to use as a chapel at one.
We did.
We've put in the new drainage system, uh, we're completing the chapel at the other cemetery, so there'll be two chapels for funerals at the cemeteries. We had those other improvements, but it, it's, running a cemetery is a, there's a reason why you don't see people starting businesses of cemeteries, right? So.
That's right.
It's, it's very difficult to do, but we're, we're stuck with that, uh, endowment fund.
You know, I do, I asked every year, hoping that he going to tell me, we going to spend that money.
Hey, they don't, they don't want the funds to die.
No, they don't want to talk. Always got an inside joke, always. Any more questions?
Any other questions?
Question. Uh, one quick question, because it did come up, and I want the public to hear it. Uh, you talked about the county road millage, and we're getting one-point-two million, and that, have we figured out what we're going to use it for? Or is it just kind of there, and then as projects come up during the year? I, Phil, I know I'm going to get asked this question if I go to a neighborhood.
You want the, you want the thirty-second version or the thirty-minute version? I'll give you the thirty-second version. You all know we're on, we don't have, get enough money for the road system.
I know.
Right, I mean, I have about a three-quarter of a billion-dollar need right now, billion, not million, if I wanted to improve our three-hundred miles of road, which we can never get, so. We're just trying to maintain what we have. Um, unfortunately, about a hundred-and-eighty of our roads are local miles, and if, if you heard the numbers from Yolanda tonight, we get maybe nine million for our major streets, which is about eighty-eight miles, and we get about three million for our local streets, which is a hundred-and-eighty miles, so. And majority of our local streets are concrete roads, which you can't make the improvements to them like you can in asphalt. If them are bad, you pretty much got to dig them up and put a new one in, but, so our plan is to utilize those on our local system.
Okay.
So, you know, as we start to get, that'll, that'll give us another one-point-two million to put, to start doing some stuff on our local road system, which we haven't historically had any ability to do.
Thank you, I'm, I'm glad I heard local. Yeah, that's a complaint, thanks. And I'll take.
Any other questions?
I, I will add something, though, that Yolanda touched on it, I think in almost every budget, but there are factors that impact our expenditures that we have almost no control over. So she mentioned a significant increase in healthcare for active employees, thirty percent is a huge increase. We are, uh, self-insured, so we, that's, it could be more than that, depending on claims, the claims that come in, so. Um, you know, that's where we talk about, if you add employees, is that something that's sustainable in the first place, when you have these expenditures that, that fluctuate so much? We have a good, um, base for our fund balance now, which is for, you know, emergencies, in case you have a kind of a one-year issue that comes up. I mean, years ago, we had a, a decrease of, I think, about four or five-hundred thousand dollars in the last quarter of revenue sharing that we were supposed to get that we didn't get. You can pull that from something like fund balance to make up that difference, but you don't want to pull from fund balance to pay for active employee healthcare or retiree healthcare, so that's, that's one. The second issue is, um, our, our, um, pension costs still, so, our, we've got multiple groups in the city. So, prior to, I think it was about two thousand and two, is that when the pension ended? Pensioners, uh, full, regular type of pension that we're paying for still. Um, and we pay that each year, actually, it's a monthly payment that goes to MERS. That's dependent upon multiple, multiple variables, variables, the market, uh, experience with the group, and we have an actuarial valuation done that tells us how much to allocate. That actuarial valuation is probably still going to need to have a lot of factors revised in it, because, um, people live longer now. The life expectancy is in there, the rate of return, um, is probably still too high in the, in the valuation. Those are all set by MERS, by the way. Um, and there's other factors in that calculation that, so you may ask sometimes, hey, you, you might ask us when you see the, um, the audit. Okay, I see that the city paid your ARC, which is your, your annual required contribution, that's calculated by the actuaries. Why does, why did that funding level go down? Well, that's because of those various factors in the valuation that maybe should be changed. So you may see that in the next couple of years, too, so you want to keep that, that balance of sustainability, right?
Correct.
Any other questions? Uh, I think some will be getting a hold of you, so that you can go over this, so that we can understand it. Mr. Manager, any questions for Mr. Manager? Yes, Tim.
Thank you, um, I brought up the strategic planning session informing, so I was going to ask you, I probably, what I was going to ask you, what is the timeline for getting data from our strategic planning session, KPIs, and results from the, uh, survey that went out?
That should be in the next, uh, few meetings. We're still working with Nancy, we did do the survey, so we had those rankings come in, unfortunately, the way the data came in wasn't necessarily the way that we wanted to use it, so we had to do some calculations on our own percentages and things like that, they came in one at a time, so our tech services was working on how to, how do we incorporate that, but Nancy and Vicki are working on that, so we should have a presentation, I'm guessing, June. Um, but we'll get you an update to make sure of that date, um, I'll get with Vicki after this, we'll put it on the follow-up.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Oh, thank you so very much. Um, I wanted to know, um, I know you, I had asked for information in regards to the ARPA update, you gave me that information, numbers, et cetera, et cetera. I'm wondering if we could do, um, because it, it should be n, n, uh, open to the public, I'm thinking maybe town hall, whatever. I'd like to, uh, be able to speak, and I've spoken to some of the, uh, entities that have received money. I'd like to do something, I mean, the time is winding up. I'd like to be able to, uh, have a conversation with, uh, all of the recipients. Maybe we could do X amount of, uh, recipients at a time, you know, because nobody, well, anyway. Uh, X amount of recipients at a time, you know, come in, give us an update, whether they're done, they've completed everything, whether they're in the process. Even if they have completed everything, was there any hiccups, et cetera, et cetera? I'd like to, uh, uh, see if, uh, we could possibly do something like that, and do maybe, you know, X amount a week or something like that, just to get a feel where they are, you know, so we won't be caught. I won't say that other phrase, so we won't be caught, you know, so nothing, you know, nothing, no surprises.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea, we'll put that on our follow-up, and we'll get in touch. I think it would be important also for them to report out what they, you know, what programs they did do and what capital improvements they did. And I think we talked about it, um, Councilwoman, about the, um, council funded a lot of capital projects. So, I think what, one of the intents with doing that was creating space the organizations could share. So now, when we have other organizations coming and saying, hey, we've got this programming.
Mm-hmm.
Well, can you reach out to these organizations that were funded, that we helped, uh, you know, create space for these types of programs, so they don't, they don't go unused.
Right, right.
Where they get used to full capacity, so I think that's a, that's a good idea.
Okay, and my other question was, um, real quick, uh, when you were talking, I, I believe, to Councilwoman Hammond in regards to, uh, a particular website, that you said that is it, is it possible that we could put that on the city website, so people could, persons can go there? Okay, thank you so much.
It's a link to MDOT for the corridor study.
Yes, yes.
So we'll, we'll send out, uh, a link to that on social media, and we'll put, put something on the website, too.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, Councilman Balls.
Uh, Mr. Morales, can we get a, a report, or tell us what you're doing about, uh, maybe building some homes in the city, or getting some grants to build some homes? Or maybe, not just low-income homes, but maybe the middle-of-the-range, a little bit higher to try at, at, attracting some other people in the city who have some money, you know what I'm saying? Have, do you guys, staff, talk about that in any, or?
Yeah, we talk, we work with a lot of the developers and, um, you know, and said, there's a lot of different variables that go into that, so if you.
Well.
Um, MEDC or MISTHA does contribute, but it needs to be mixed-use, so, um, we can bring some of those groups, it may be a good idea to bring some of those groups in to talk to council members about what they're doing and what partnerships they need, so, uh, yeah, definitely.
So, we, we still have a little, some funds left with the interest. Is there any developers that's talking about bringing something here, maybe we can attract some of them by giving them some of this interest, ARPA money, to help them build some homes in the city of Saginaw? Um, is that too late?
Well, it, I mean, it's, you can't use public funds for private purchases, so if it's, for, for private purposes. So if it's a developer that needs additional gap financing, we can't just give them money to do that, but, um, we'll, we'll work on something to let you know what, you know, what possibilities are.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, we did try to do, um, and you, I know you're aware of this, Councilman, but we had that program to build houses through the CDBG block grant program, pre-COVID. Um, but we didn't get a lot of, a lot of cooperation, and I think, really, that, the, the key there is, you know, you have the developers, but also, um, you need the cooperation from the local businesses, so you can fill this housing quickly. And I think that's one thing that's going on in, uh, with Covenant right now, but that could be further expanded with some other businesses. Houseback Pickle was doing something like that, um, years ago, they were one of the first ones, but it ended up being costly on, and, and doing some of the loans, but definitely something that we should look at. We did, you know, the city is, um, you know, we have things that we do well, and building and marketing housing isn't necessarily one of them. We did that with the NSP two program. And we ended up sitting on houses for a year or two years. So, uh, the best way for us to do that is to partner with another organization that either has the need for the housing, or is, is developing the housing. So, yeah, we'll, we'll put something together for you.
Thank you. Anybody else? One.
Two. Three, four, no, okay, real quick. I, I do, uh, have a quick question. What, what can, is there an ordinance or anything on the books? If not, uh, tell me something else. In regards to, um, the young lady, uh, that spoke in regards to the burnt house, et cetera? Because she's not the only one, and if you ever lived in a neighborhood with a burnt house, you smell it forever. You smell it till it's gone. So, uh, I mean, it could be years, you smell that burnt house continually. Is there some ordinance, or is it some, what, is there something you can do, uh, in regards to burnt homes that have stood there, you know, for X amount of years? Just, you know, not just specifically to the young lady, but in general?
I mean, generally, though, y, y, in, you know, we have one, I think, four houses from our house right now, that got struck by lightning and burned, but you, the, the first, you know, obstacle is the length of, not speaking about that one.
Right.
In particular, but in general, the insurance companies seem to take a long time within fire, fire investigation. So typically, can be a year or more, I think we had one down the street that was probably three years for an investigation. Um, the chief could probably tell you afterwards a little bit more about that, but that's one thing, and then, we do, um, we do work with the insurance companies to withhold for demo. But, you know, you still have private property rights and things like that, I, I, um, to work with. But we do try to work with the homeowner, um, if they are going to improve it, sometimes, um, sometimes part of the settlement, I think, with the insurance company is a payout with a demo required, too, so it, it all depends. That's not, doesn't specifically answer.
Right, right, but I, 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 real more information, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Manager. No. No, she'll have my question. She'll have my question. She's over her limit. I'll just say, you got something else you want to say?
No, I'm just playing, I'm good. Motion to adjourn.
No, but. Second, inappropriate, oh, my God.
Adam Clark.
I guess you think we'll be joking.
Now, you ready for me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, this is just an announcement, the agenda has been available at City Hall and on our city webpage, and on SG TV channel one ninety-one. I need a motion to, to approve the consent agenda leaving. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have any exceptions? Yes.
Number thirteen.
Any other exceptions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Number thirteen.
Number thirteen is to approve the proposed traffic regulation changes for the Public Services Department, Traffic Engineering Division. That was Councilmember Hammond.
Hello, Mr. Carwatt.
How are you?
I'm doing very well. I would just like for myself and the public an explainer for, on the memo, we have number eleven and number twelve. That would be the change of parking regulations at North Niagara Street, fourteen hundred and nineteen hundred blocks. Just because it's phrased in a confusing way to, I didn't really understand it when I read it.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if I do either, but I'll do my best.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, no, I'm just kidding. So, yeah, you guys know my Traffic Engineering Department city engineer handles most of these, and when these come through, there's a process that gets vetted and the guidelines. But basically, so eleven says that we're abolishing parking regulations on North Niagara for, all parking regulations and limitations on both sides of North Niagara Street from twenty-six hundred feet south of West Genesee, so it's an existing railroad crossing there, to West Genesee are hereby abolished. So that's whether there was a two-hour parking, if it's just, if there's, they're all abolished. And then what they're doing is re-establishing parking regulations in that same stretch where parking is prohibited on the east and west side of North Niagara Street from twenty-six hundred feet south of West Genesee, so from them railroad tracks again, to West Genesee, with the exception of back a curb parking area located on the west side of the road from six-hundred-and-sixty-four feet south. So from West Genesee, six-hundred-and-sixty-four feet south, they're gonna allow back a curb parking in that area. And then from three-hundred-and-thirty-two feet south of the south curb line of West Genesee, the back a curb parking area has a two-hour parking limitation. So that same side of the road, they're gonna allow parking, but for the south three-hundred-and-thirty, anything south of the three-hundred-and-thirty-some feet isn't gonna have a restriction on the time, but everything within that three-hundred-and-thirty-some, three-hundred-and-thirty-two feet will have a two-hour parking limitation.
Okay, and do you have any reasoning for the emphasis for this change?
Say again?
Do you have a reasoning for the?
I do not, in front of me. I mean, I will in the entire study, Carly, if you'd like to. I can get you all that information. I mean, I know it's, the way they word these sometimes, I mean, it could probably be worded a little bit better to.
I, I, I get it.
But I could get you the diagram with the reasons, and normally these come through a request or if we're gonna reconstruct the street in some fashion, that's what a lot of these are stemmed from, but.
Okay, okay.
But if you wanted more detail, I can for sure get that to, for every individual. I mean, there's packets that are, like, the studies are actually.
I'll read it.
We trust you.
I'll do it. Okay.
Did I miss, excuse me, did I miss, I thought the exception was thirteen. I didn't know it was eleven and twelve.
No, it is, but there's, there's eleven and twelve items within thirteen on the traffic regs, Ms. Mayor.
Okay.
So, yeah, she was questioning about item eleven and twelve under the council communication.
I'm just asking.
So.
I will motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Do we have any boards or commission reports, any boards that's related to the city of Saginaw? Yes?
Just a quick update. So at the last planning commission meeting, this is the old Walgreens that stands on the corner of Genesee and North Michigan. The group there came before us and it was approved. The old Walgreens is gonna be razed, and that's gonna be turned into a service station, gas, Speedway and a 7-Eleven, so that is going to be coming fairly soon.
It says 7-Eleven?
It's a combo, yeah. There's a few of them in the state. This will be one of them. It's actually a Speedway slash 7-Eleven store that'll be put in there. Completely redeveloped.
Any other reports?
I just, I'm sorry, where was that one at?
Corner, the old Walgreens on the corner of North Michigan and Genesee.
Across from right there, across from.
Okay, all right, awesome.
Any other? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Onto resolutions. We have one and a proven cost agreement, twenty-five dash fifty-two forty-four, with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Hess Avenue from South Jefferson Avenue to Sheridan Avenue.
I need, I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Takes you to miscellaneous business.
Do we have any motions that need to be on the floor? Yes, yes, Councilwoman.
I have a motion for council approval of reimbursement of hotel and mileage travel expenses for attendance of the Building Michigan Communities Conference.
This is a form of a motion?
She make, she's making a motion.
A support, then.
Discussion. It's been moved and supported, yes.
I'll just speak first on the motion. I sent an email with information about the Building Michigan Communities Conference. This is hosted by Mishta, and it is the premier affordable housing conference happening in Michigan, and it includes a ton of developers. There's literally sixty sessions. I asked Cassie for help picking which was, some of the ones I should go to, because there is a ton happening at the same time that are all amazing. But I've received a scholarship to attend this conference, so there's no registration fee. However, the scholarship doesn't cover the cost of the hotels, and it doesn't cover the cost of travel, which would be a pretty big expense for me to incur on my own, which is why I'm coming to council for it. So this is for some education for myself that I intend to bring back, and if council would like, I can write you guys up a whole, whole report on what I learned, if you would, you would be so willing to read it, but I'm, I'm really excited to go. It's, it is on my birthday, so I will be spent, yeah, yep, seven AM. I'm gonna be on my birthday learning about housing and mezzanine funding structures, so.
Yes.
So what, what is the motion?
Do you want me to read it again?
Yes, please.
It is a motion for council approval of reimbursement of hotel and mileage travel expenses for attendance of the Building Michigan Communities Conference. I will say I did get this recommendation of this language from our clerk to help me make sure that this motion was in accordance with our council rules and how we needed to make it formally.
All right, thank you.
Any questions, yes?
Yeah, that's a comment. I appreciate the fact that you're gonna go there and bring back some information and share with the rest of the council and with the staff. I mean, I wish that maybe the staff could go to meetings like this, when they talk about housing and stuff. We need to be there in Lansing, getting all this information and bringing it back to our city, because we do need some housing here. So I want to appreciate the fact that you even want to go. I mean, you got the energy and the, and everything else that goes along with it, bring it on back.
Just for a point, staff does go to those sessions.
They do go?
Yes.
Anybody, some staff going this year?
I am.
Okay, good. Oh, so we talking about grants and stuff like that, and you, no, 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 now you, okay. Go get them grants for us, for the housing.
Yes, Councilman.
Okay, my question is, so now that we found that staff is attending the, the conference, so they'll be bringing back information, maybe we could get an update. What is the cost that we're asked, being asked to cover here?
May I respond? Thank you. So the cost is for two nights at a hotel and travel expenses. Right now, the hotel cost that I'm looking at, the cheapest hotel room I can find, recommended by the conference, is a hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars a night, and then there's taxes and fees. If council approves this, I'm gonna hit up our, our management staff and see if they have something better that's in the area, because I don't know if what I'm looking at is the cheapest. And there were some cheaper options available, but they sold out before I knew that I got the scholarship. So it's a little bit of an unfortunate timing situation there. I wish I could find something cheaper, but that's what I was looking at in the area. Maybe if, if, and if this passes, I'll, I'll make sure I contact Vicki and see if she can work some magic there, because it's, yeah, it's, I don't, I don't like those hotel prices. I don't like them.
Yes. First of all, I want to say happy early birthday. And second of all, thank you for wanting to go to the conference. That's awesome, because I, too, want to go to a conference. I will be attending the conferences. Not that I want to go, but I've already registered for it myself. It is the spring conference for MML for next week. But unfortunately, I don't get my hotel paid for, nor any mileage, so.
Well, it's in Bay City?
That's right. So my thing is, if I don't get mine's paid for, or my mileage, my hotel, I'm gonna be paying for that myself. So I feel like, and I believe to maintain this approach, that we cover our own expenses when it comes to things outside of what the city will pay for. I think we should stick with that approach so that it doesn't cause any potential complications in the future. Just my own opinion. And I think it'd be good for everyone.
Carly, thank you for, thank you, for being willing to go. I think it's, from reading and going to the website, looking at the options, appreciative that some of the city staff's going as well. But it's something that's broad and can help Saginaw as a whole, bringing back that information. And it'd be a shame if, you know, someone that does not digest information like you is not there. So I completely agree with that.
I've got concerns. Number one, I probably travel more than anybody up here, and my stuff is paid out of pocket. And I bring it back, and I bring results. This is not the first time, because if I'm not mistaken, last year, year before, we had another council member who asked, and we voted it down. Our board, part of our charter says that we've got two groups that we can go to, MML and National Leagues of Cities. I applaud you, I really do. I just got a problem with it, because I eat dirt. When I catch flights to Washington and stay in Washington, I pay for it, or somebody else pays for it. And so if we want to be fair across the board, I think we need to stay to our charter, stay to what we've got, and happy, happy birthday. But I've been to conferences, even through MML, that they didn't pay. I apologize. If you wanted to stay, you paid yourself and you drove back and forth. So that's just my opinion. I'm not trying to be petty, but we need to be consistent. Yes?
Thank you very much. Does the charter say that we cannot do it?
No, it didn't.
Okay, so, I don't know, maybe somebody did ask, and maybe I wasn't here, but I think it's awesome, and I think we need to just call for the vote.
Support.
Yes.
What I'm wondering, too, is, like, every year we've went to the MML.
Mayor, I think there was a motion and a second on the call.
There was a what?
A motion and a second on the call for the question.
Was there a second before I raised my hand?
I believe so.
All right.
Okay, calling for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Nay. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Aye.
Councilmember Seals.
Nay.
Councilmember Balls.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Garcia.
Nay.
Councilmember Astash.
Nay.
Councilmember Braddock.
Aye.
Councilmember Wiggins.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Nay.
Mayor Moore.
Nay.
We have four yes and five no. The motion is denied to call for the question.
Say that again.
So he's still under discussion? You did a call for the question, roll call vote, and that motion was denied, so he's still under discussion.
My hearing is going bad for real.
All right, thank you. What I was gonna say is that in the past, the MML conferences, too, have been kind of budgeted. Those are the only two that we go. We go to the spring legislative, then we go to the fall conference. Is this even budgeted? Because at those conferences, they're, the manager has generously given part of his budget for council members to go, because not all council members used to attend these events, and now there's more of an interest. So we are, are you offering to pay for, and then you're not getting paid?
And I, I did ask.
So it's, that's, that's accurate, just for appointment, for information purposes. The, the council, city council training budget is based upon past experiences. Years, within the last five or six years, all of council started going to the MML. So typically, we pay for a lot of the council training from the city manager's budget, which is my training budget for me.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
How much is this? How much money are we talking?
Seven hundred and eighty dollars a night.
No, they, but you still gotta get mileage and everything else. Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So the council rule, that is the part that pays for the Michigan Municipal League Conference, it states, first it states that council people are encouraged to attend continuing education sessions. Then it specifies that the Michigan Municipal League will specifically be something that is budgeted for. So when I first approached the clerk about this, I, you know, was asking, what is the appropriate way to go about doing this? Is this something that's already necessarily budgetarily allocated for? And the answer is no, because the only thing that's allocated for the budget because of that rule is the one thing that's specified. And anything else is, again, it's, per the council rules, encouraged, but you need to vote for council, a vote from council in order to be able to affirm that that particular thing outside of MML is accounted for. So anybody who's doing continuing education can bring it to a vote, and then the council decides whether or not it's something that they would like to fund. So I'd also like to say that I know that our Planning and Economic Development Director, Cassie Zimmer, would normally be going to one of these, but May fourteenth is also her birthday, and she had a planned vacation to Mexico, which is gonna be amazing that she's gonna be going to, so I want to defend her honor. So she will not be there because of, because of that trip, but I, you know, look forward to, you know, I look forward to being there to represent, bring information back, and probably, if this passes, coordinate with Ms. Bland to make sure that we're not going to the same session so that we can double up on the information that we're able to receive. So that is what I will say. And, oh, you had a specific question about the amount of money. Like I said, the current hotel expense that I rang up was five hundred dollars with taxes, and then the travel fee that we had from Lansing was, I think, about a hundred dollars, right, was the IRS reimbursement rate for the mileage. So that's six hundred and thirty dollars, six hundred and fifty dollars, depending on how the taxes turn out, unless there's some kind of discount that I'm not able to get on my end when I apply for the hotel that Vicki might be able to wrestle up, or a different hotel price. She's able to find something that I was not able to find. Thank you. Got it all in there?
I wanted to go last year in September, and I do earn the credits, because I do want to learn. And we were supposed to go to Mackinac Island. We talked about it, and I didn't end up going, because it was election year, and it was something I was wanting to do to meet my goal, to get my award in Lansing. I didn't end up going because of the amount of money that it was gonna cost the taxpayers and, you know, coming out of the fund, so I sat it out. I said, you know, I'll wait, and there was other ways around. I got my credits. I do go to MML. And I know the last time we went, Carly wasn't in all the sessions. I'm not sure what she was doing, but I feel like if we're using money, that we need to be using it accordingly to the taxpayers.
I don't be talking, I don't be saying stuff that don't make sense.
Yeah.
Councilman Balls, you had a question?
No, ma'am.
Councilwoman Sylvia?
Ma'am, listen. I would like for us, first of all, to be respectable in what we say up here, because it means a lot. And once you say it, you can't take it back. And some stuff, either we gonna vote on it, we gonna do it, or we not. I appreciate the, I appreciate that this young lady wants to go, and I have no doubt in my mind that Councilwoman Hammond gonna bring this information back to us. We gonna get some information, not only city council, the city of Saginaw's gonna get this information. What anybody else didn't get, or didn't ask for, you have not, because you asked not. And I don't remember sitting here, and I cannot remember if I ever missed a city council meeting. So with that being said, if you didn't ask, that was up to you not to ask. This young lady came and asked. Now either we vote, we vote for it, or we don't. I mean, we need to really up here watch what we say, because some stuff is not even, is not necessary.
Yes.
Well, if we go back to the council rules that we're looking at, reimbursement in accordance with city policy and regulations. What's the city policy, what's the regulations? That's vague. Do we need to change the rules again? Defining what we pay for, what we don't pay for? And you were denied, so. And you were denied, so.
Yes.
I'll just, as an answer to Councilwoman Ostache's questions, the rules and policies and procedures are already laid out. That sheet that we filled out when we got back from MML, it's the same policies and procedures that we all get trained on.
Yes.
I'll have to call for the question, please.
Second.
Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Back to the original motion.
You're on another call for the question, actually, so.
I'm sorry.
You took your vote? Everybody said yes, there was no nay?
No nays.
No nay. Okay, so now we're back to the original motion, which was for council approval of reimbursement of hotel and mileage travel expenses for attendance at the Building Michigan Communities Conference. So just take your vote.
Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Yes.
Councilmember Seals.
Nay.
Councilmember Balls.
Yes.
Council, Mayor Potem Garcia.
Nay.
Councilmember Ostache.
Nay.
Councilmember Braddock.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
And Mayor Moore.
Nay.
You have five yes and four no. That motion is approved. You are still under miscellaneous business.
Any other motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Support. It's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?